Help us, Dyke.
Well, thank you, everybody, for being here at the Commissioners Meeting this evening. First order on our agenda is special announcements, recognitions.
Yes, sir, I have one. I'm gonna read this. It's gonna be hard to keep the name out of it, the way they've written this, so we'll just have to go with me here. As I'm pleased to nominate Drew Cornell for Employee of the Month in recognition of outstanding work and dedication to Howard County Health Department as assistance with the tailoring and street district enforcement efforts. Drew has consistently demonstrated a strong work ethic and attention to detail in accepting system reports and other records. His diligence has been instrumental in supporting the county's compliance and enforcement initiatives, ensuring that regulatory standards are upheld, that data is accurately maintained. His commitment to thoroughness and accountability has not only improved the efficiency of our processes, but also strengthens in our ability to make informed decisions. Drew's proactive approach and collaborative spirit makes him an invaluable asset to our team. For these reasons, I highly recommend Drew Cornell for Employee of the Month. Contributions reflect the high standards of mission of Howard County Health Department. Nominated by Jim Vest and Brooke Milburn.
Drew, would you like to join us up here in front, please? Next item is approval of previous meeting minutes.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
The meeting minutes are approved. Next is departmental business and reports. Mr. Stone Street, you're up.
Thank you, good afternoon. I have one request this evening, and it is for resealing of three lots that we own. One is Howard Haven, one is Walker Lees, and the last would be Jeff Stout by the corner area. It's only three lots, but it's a lot of acreage. The total cost for all three is fifteen thousand sixty-four dollars. I'd like to pay for it from Coomcat Building Repair, eleven thirty-eight point four seven two four one.
Who's doing the work? Is it Jantzen's or?
Jantzen's is gonna do it, yes. They've always won the bids. My connections with other companies have retired, so I use Mark primarily as my... And the numbers always fall right in line with everybody else.
Okay, questions?
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That request is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Yes, sir.
Next is Howard Haven, Jennifer. Welcome.
I'm just here to get Gregory Bell approved to reside at Howard Haven. He was an emergency admit on June twenty-third. I did get that approval from Mr. Dodd.
Questions for Jennifer?
Things under control up there.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That admission is approved. Thank you, Jennifer. Next is our recorder. Recorder.
Good afternoon. I just have four Laredo agreements for you guys to sign off on. Easy peasy.
Any questions for Tori?
Alan, did you look at this?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, there is standard agreements that I use every time that Alan's previously approved.
I'll make the motion to accept the Laredo agreements from the Recorder's office.
I'll second it.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
That is approved. Thank you. We have any new business to come before the Commissioners? Very none. We are ready for salary claims.
One million, two hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and one cent.
Motion approved, presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Our claims are approved. Next is our payroll expense.
One million, two hundred and three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and one cent.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
These are approved. Next will be our operating claims.
One million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, seventy-three dollars and five cents.
Motion approved, presented. That's presented.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Operating claims are approved. Any claims to ratify?
None.
Do we have any monthly reports?
We have weights and measures monthly report, May sixteen, twenty twenty-five, through June fifteen, twenty twenty-five.
Markos has received. Any grants?
None.
Thank you for all of that. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, I have several matters. First is a resolution affirming the order on an unsafe premises. This is the premises we call the David Bledsoe property, which is at forty-six, forty-eight East, two fifty South in West Middleton. Our enforcement authority has declared this to be an unsafe premises, and there was a hearing held, and Mr. Bledsoe and his attorney were requested at that hearing to allow certain action by the Commissioners, that being at least allowing us to go inside and inspect, do a structural inspection of that property to see if it was unsafe. They have not done so, they've not responded in any way to that. So, the legal procedure is, at this point, that the... This board now should affirm the order declaring this to be an unsafe premises, but there also has to be another hearing scheduled, so we've set that for the first... Mr. Me in August, which is August seventh. I just need a signature on the resolution, which takes that action.
Questions about this for Mr. Wilson? Yes, I need a motion to approve Resolution Number twenty twenty-five BCCR.
Sixteen.
Is that right?
Yep. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that resolution is approved. Secondly, it looks like it requires my signature, so I'm asking the Commissioners to grant me approval to sign this resolution.
Make that motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, I have a written copy of the declaration of local emergency. This dates back to the June fourteenth flood, and in order to obtain some monetary relief from the state, we have been declared... We have been required to declare an emergency in writing, so I've prepared the declaration that just needs to be signed.
We did a press release, hoping that members of the community, if they suffered any damage, they'd go through the United Way, but we also suffered auto road closures, a community that's painfully aware of. That could be as much as four hundred thousand dollars to repair all that. So, with this declaration, we'll be asking the state to try and recover some of this money for Howard County. Questions? Do we ask for a motion?
Yes.
I'll make motion, accept.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
While there's no guarantees with this, it's something that we felt we needed to try.
Next, I want to shift gears, and we'll talk about the NG Solar project. I have four different issues we wanted to discuss tonight. First, we've had, in the past several months, we signed off on a road use agreement and a drainage agreement. Those were already approved by this board, but those original agreements did not have an amount inserted for the amount of the bond. Now those have been completed with the bond amount, and I just need to have them re-signed. Hand both those over.
First, we'll do the road use agreement. Are there questions?
I just... Could you read the bond amount of the road agreement, or?
Sure.
One was three million, and one was five million. Do you remember which one it was?
I don't. Not without looking.
That's all right. Just think it should be none, but...
All these words. Alan, you could have voted for us.
The drainage is three million, so the road is fine.
Okay, road's fine.
Roads are fine.
Okay, so first we'll do the road use. Questions, comments? Do I hear a motion to approve the revised revision?
Yeah, approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Second will be the drainage.
It's three million.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, we sent out a request for proposal to have a compliance officer. That officer would make sure the NG complies with the requirements of our zoning ordinance and solar ordinance. Have Pam come up. We received some responses to RFP that we need to open publicly.
Good afternoon. So, we received four. We sent the request for proposal. They were due today at noon, and so the first one is from Butler Fairman. My recommendation is that these are opened and taken under advisement at this time. So, do you want anything read out of these? I have not looked at them, so I don't even know, like, an amount at this point in time. These will go to Greg Lake, Amber Toll, and to you guys to review for...
Read who they're from.
Okay. The next one is from VS Engineering. The next one is from Aegis. And then the final one is from North Point Engineering and Surveying. Maybe.
You want?
So, that's what you have. I will make sure that you get a copy, and that Amber and Greg get a copy, and when do you want these back? With a recommendation.
Greg's out, ten, the rest of this week.
No later than the first Commissioners Meeting in August?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I make a motion to take those under advisement?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll take those under advisement. Thank you, Pam.
Final matter I have is the Economic Development Agreement pursuant to our solar ordinance. This was a requirement for the solar project. We've spent the last several weeks, at least, discussing this with NG, going over it, making revisions, and we've, as of today at least, reached an agreement on all of the terms of the Economic Development Agreement. So, I'll present that to you for your consideration.
Okay. Normally, we wouldn't do this, but we're gonna allow Mr. Simone to make a comment before we look at this.
Thank you. First of all, I want to... Thank you for allowing me to talk right now. This is very important. I think the information I have here is very important. So, if you open up that first tab, NG applied for their special use permit January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, and it got approved February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. If you flip to the next sheet there, I emailed Mr. Sheeline June sixteenth of this year. I asked him if NG had applied, not approved, applied for a building permit. You can see in his email, he says, "I sent an email yesterday about three o'clock and let you know that they have not applied for a building permit." Once you flip that next tab, these are gonna be all the minutes from when they got their special use permit approved, because they did file for an extension. However, that extension was, and it says right there on the special permit, the applicant requests flexibility to begin construction under this special exception, no later than December thirty-first of this year. So, then if you go to my very last page there, you have Howard County zoning ordinance, two thousand nine dash BCCO dash twenty-one, I believe it is, and it's Article Seven. Letter M, it says right there, plain as day, if the board grants a special exception, it shall direct the applicant to apply for a building permit and/or an improvement location permit within four months, or the special exception will be void. If such application complies with all ordinance and rules, a building permit and/or improvement location permit for the use authorized by special exception shall be issued. So, what I'm trying to point out here is, they're not in compliance with our zoning ordinance. They had until June twenty twenty-three to apply for that building permit, and they haven't done that. So, I know today was important for the county to sign this EDA, so I'm asking you guys to do, and so suggestion, is to table that agreement until NG gets in compliance with our zoning ordinance. And that's all I have, really. So, I appreciate you allowing me to show you this information. Have a good evening.
Mr. Simone, I appreciate this and the efforts you put forward on this. I let these guys say what they want, but I don't think this affects what we're doing here. This would have... This would have, I don't know, been nice, too. Maybe it was presented at this planning commission, but I don't think it affects the EDA part. So, I'll let you guys respond.
I think maybe Brad's point is, is once the EDA was finalized, then the projects can go forward. Is that your case, I think?
Yeah.
I think that's his point, is that... But I believe this was brought up at the Planning Commission meeting.
Absolutely.
And I... For a fact, I know it was, because I was there and I heard it. So, I know that it was, and it was dealt with that evening, if I'm correct, or they said it would pass, so I... I'm not an attorney, and I'm not gonna try to play one on this one.
No. Give you one more try up here, Brad. Okay. Alan, anything you'd like to respond?
I... No, there's nothing I can say about it.
Okay.
My... And I say that because, and I've talked to Brad about this, he had an attorney stand up at the Planning Commission to say that she represented Brad, and the rules of professional conduct prevent me from discussing anything with him, knowing that he's represented by counsel. I've not received anything from his attorney saying I don't represent him anymore, so I'm required to assume that she still does. So, I'm prohibited from talking to him about that, whether it's one-on-one or whether it's in a meeting. I still can't talk to him about it, if I know he's represented by counsel.
Understandable.
So, my hands are kinda tied on that. And I have talked to Brad about that and told him the same thing I just said.
Understandable. Questions? Comments?
What is... You know, is this... Does this affect what we're doing tonight? That's, you know, legal-wise, I'm not a lawyer, like Jeff said.
I don't think it affects what we're doing tonight.
And does this pertain to their building permit? I mean, Greg's here, I mean, does it pertain to them having a building permit? Have they met the standards? Was...
I think they were told after, on the Planning Commission, it does not.
But is... I guess my point is, does this affect the EDA?
Is it a what?
Does this affect the EDA? This, even if they don't have a building permit, does it affect the EDA? And if, you know, do they have... Did they get any extension? And is that here somewhere? Do we... I mean, if Greg can speak to that, I'd like to know the... You know, did they get an extension, and is it documented somewhere if they did?
Greg, do you want to speak to that?
I thought Alan and I did a pretty good job of answering this particular question back in the Planning Commission meeting. It is in the county ordinance, but when that county ordinance is put together for a special exception, it was put together for developments that could be done in a timely fashion, which this, since we've never done it before, a solar farm in Howard County, it... There's no way this could be done in the timeframe. So, I would give an extension for that. We do the same thing when it comes to major subdivisions in the county and the city, because when they are issued a permit, the permit has to start within one year and be finished within two. There's no way you can build a subdivision in two years. So, again, that was put in the ordinance for developments that could be done in a timely fashion. This could not be done in a timely fashion, and if you remember correctly, not only that, once that special exception was attained, then we got into the new solar ordinance, which took several weeks or months, I can't remember now however long it took to get that done. They have been going back and forth with Drainage Board for over a year. So, in my opinion, that kind of put a halt to all of this, but when asked, I would give an extension for this, like I have for other developments that take more time than what this ordinance allows for, because you just can't possibly get this done within that timeframe. You couldn't possibly build a major subdivision within two years. That's why we've always given extensions for those projects that take that long. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you, Greg. Any other comments?
This time just...
I make a motion to accept the economic agreement from NG Solar.
Comment. So, I'm being told by counsel that the EDA has nothing to do with a building permit?
That's correct. It's a separate issue. The EDA is required by our solar ordinance. That's where the EDA originates. It's one of the agreements that was required by our solar ordinance.
Device of counsel, I'll have to second it then.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The economic development agreement is passed. Anything else, Mr. Wilson?
That's all I have. That's plenty.
Yeah, I'd say that's plenty. Mr. Lipinski?
Nothing.
Mr. Brady?
Prayers go out to the Murdoch family. I guess that's... Attorney Decard's secretary was killed this last couple of weeks in a car wreck down by Greentown, so it's pretty tragic. They were good for... My son worked with a good friend of them, so it's pretty tragic. So, prayers with the family.
It was a tragic weekend here in Howard County, so... My condolences to all everyone affected by that. Do you or Alan need this? Hey, public comments? Hey, public comments?
Brad Simone, Eastern Howard County. First of all, that's not what I was expecting, but I think you just might have created a lot of problems in the county, because people are going to watch this, people pay attention to what's going on, and now they're going to see that big businesses don't have to comply with our ordinances, so some people may take Howard County ordinances now to be nothing but merely recommendations. So I think you've created, you may have just created some chaos here, and I can guarantee you this, you have just set yourself up for a lawsuit from the people of Howard County, especially Eastern Howard County, because I'm, I know I'm going to, I'm pretty sure there's a lot of people in this room right now today, and they're standing right behind me, and we're going to all take this to court and see what Judge Murray has to say again. When we lost our appeal, she said, "This court strictly follows the ordinance." Well, okay, Judge Murray, here's what the ordinance says, had four months, they didn't do it. Their special use permit's void. They don't have one. You guys just approved an economic agreement or something, they don't have a permit to do now. So it's like, okay, but thanks.
Any other public comment? You need to come up to the podium, please.
I can sign in, is that okay?
That's fine.
Okay. I just want to ask, because I-
Give us your name.
Oh, my name's Melanie Vess. Do I need to give my address? 3521 Olean Drive. I just think it's really interesting that they miss a deadline, and you just push, you keep going with every meeting, even though they haven't gotten their building permit, you just keep pushing it along until it, we can't cancel it, because the momentum is there. But somehow the jackrabbits got canceled from the municipal stadium, because they missed a deadline, and all of a sudden, life changes here in Kokomo. Why is that okay, that, that they, they missed a deadline and everything stops, and now we have all of this new stuff, but something as serious as a solar farm that already people don't want in the community? You're pushing it through, you're making it to the point where it's inevitable because of all that you've done, it'll be a good excuse. You can now say, "Well, we've got this far, we've got to see it through." And what we're trying to do is to show you, you don't have all of your Ts crossed or your Is dotted, and that's what's important in this case, when it affects so many families and the welfare of our community. And that's how I stand on this. I'm imploring you, at least put a pause on something so that this can't get started until this gets addressed. There should be a building permit, and they should follow the rules. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
I'm David Vess, 3521 Olean Drive. My personal opinion, it's disgraceful what I see happening over and over here. You even said yourself, you weren't sure what the, what the right answer should be, and you're going by the attorney's suggestion. You had this information a month ago. You admitted, Mr. Lipinski, that this was presented, and it was in a notebook given by the attorney to you guys. It was a, no, no, at the last meeting. And the notebook was, looked like it was pretty, pretty thick. It was, I don't know how long, five, 10 minutes later, that you voted on it. You didn't look at that information. Now, did you have that information in advance? I don't know. Can you answer that?
I can answer. I was giving a multitude of information in advance.
From, from, from that notebook that had everything laid out?
From Mr. Simone.
Okay.
I can't answer specifically, but, I mean.
Of the, of the commissioners that were present, there were, I don't know, eight notebooks given out. Most of them, the notebooks were just sat, sat down. Some of them were leafed through while the attorney was giving highlights. But you didn't have time to study that. That was information for you, and you went ahead with your vote. Even though you were warned, the attorney here was warned that they were not following process. You are so picky about Robert's Rules of Order, that you have to get a second and a, and a motion and a second, and then you all vote. But then when it comes down to following your own procedures, that's part of our code. You don't follow that. And you say, "Well, it's obvious that it takes more work to put in a new solar plant that we've never had before." Well, then that's why you have waivers, that's why you have exceptions, but you still follow the rule. And I think it's disgraceful. Thank you.
My name's Josh Cothran. I live at 1970 North Hampton Drive in Cotswold Hills.
I ask you to come to the meeting.
Yeah, I talked to Mr. Lipinski last month. That's a large map of the watershed that feeds into the John Galbert Drainage Ditch, which happens to be right next to my property. It's about 330 acres, goes clear into Tipton County, part of Chippendale, the Wildcat Creek Apartments, the storage units are on Dixon and 26. Anyhow, I moved into my house in 2016. At that point, my sump was dry as a bone. Never ran, never did anything, till I put in a water softener that would actually kick on when it did its thing. Fast forward to 2023, 2024 time period, my sump was having a hard time keeping up. Come to find out, Mr. Lake came out, Greg Lake ran his machine through the county drain, cut out some tree roots and stuff. It did improve, to the point where my sump was keeping up. That was spring of '24. Fast forward to May of '24, they had a problem with the, the original, the original pipe that went under Dixon from the farm to the west had been plugged up for, I guess, from the way Mr. Lake tells it, the farmer complained to him for 20-plus years about his farm fields flooding. And Dixon Road was starting to wash out, so they had to tear up the road, and they put in a new 24-inch pipe going under Dixon and our, our pond, if you will. But technically, our pond is not a pond, it's part of the drainage ditch, and it's like a giant running toilet. It's only six feet deep, and it's always draining under North Hampton, into the swell, into the small 12-inch county drain, which was put in in 2017, or, excuse me, 1917. Mr. Lake has repeatedly confessed that that drain is terribly undersized, can't handle the volume. It's, there's no money to fix it, but when they put that new pipe in, under Dixon, to say I'm overwhelmed on my property with water is, I'm not even touching it. Now, I mean, I mean, everybody got flooded when we got the seven inches, right? I had water rushing through my finished walkout basement when we got two and a half inches the week before. So, and now when we just get a thunderstorm, I have to place, on top of my regular sump pump, my battery backup, I have to throw in a one-horse transfer pump and run a farm line out to the back of my lot, and keep my back doors cracked open during thunderstorms, just so I'm not underwater. So at this point, I mean, I'm worried about my foundation. I can't file an insurance claim, because I'm technically not in a floodplain. And when I reached out to Mr. Lake for help, he just told me to get an attorney. So I'm here just asking, what next? What do I do? Can you guys help me get through this, work through this? But the way Mr. Lake tells it, it's going to be probably a decade before they can replace that county drain, because it's so expensive and all the meetings and everything, it's got to, you know. And I'm the only one whose property is directly affected. Everyone else is going to, I mean, you think these people are mad about the solar farm. When they have to pay, everybody's got to pay $10,000 that's in that green area to, for the new drain, they're going to, they're not my friends anymore, they're going to all be mad about that. So I guess, I'm not going to make it 10 years for new drain. My foundation won't make it. I mean, unless you've seen it in action, and the water coming from the west that hits my property, it's just not, it's just unreal.
I have been out there and waited that area when there's a lot of water. Part of the problem is, when the state came in there and did 26 there, there's some problems there as well. I talked to Mr. Lake about that. Me personally, and let these guys answer for themselves, me personally, I'd like to see this brought up at the Drainage Board meeting.
Okay.
Which, there was nothing on the agenda for tonight where we could discuss it there, but, so that meeting was canceled, but Drainage Board is always after this meeting, so I'd love to see this on the Drainage Board agenda.
And I would have went to that, that route, but like I said, when I tried to talk cordially with Mr. Lake about it, he just told me, "Get an attorney." That's all he would say to me. So, I mean.
We had a nice conversation.
Yeah, and I, you know, and I like Mr. Lake. He's come out, I've talked to him probably half a dozen times. I was with him half the time he was running his tool through the drain.
And I've, I've driven through your subdivision just recently.
You know, and that improved things when he did that, but when he put that new 24-inch pipe in, I mean, when we get a hard rain, it looks like a 24-inch fire hose on full blast.
And I don't think you're the only person having problems out there.
I'm the only person with this kind of problem. Yes, sir, I am.
The gentleman I talked to has problems as well, so.
But I'm the only one that's got to run a farm hose out in my backyard and stay home when it's raining, because, I mean, I'm, I'll wash away, so.
You know, that swell you're talking about, and you know how much water gets in that swell.
Oh, it's millions of gallons of water, I mean, it's.
And it runs quickly.
Yes.
And, you know, I've been thinking about this over the weekend, because everything's going on in Texas. Kids get out and play in that swell, as you probably know, or maybe you don't know. But they play in that when there's a rain, and it's dangerous. And so I got thinking about that, so this is very timely, so.
Yeah, I've, I've had to run the kids off as well, not my kids, but other kids, yeah, they, because it's, it's forceful when it comes through there.
Is it possible for you to come to the Drainage Board meeting? It'll be two weeks from today.
Absolutely, I'll come, yeah. This, like I said, I'm in a spot. I can't even file a home insurance claim. I've got a, I've got a ruined, finished walkout basement that I'm going to have to unfinish, basically just paint the cement and pretend like it used to be a finished basement. Because I can't, I can't just keep doing $10,000 remodels and ripping up my floor and, and doing all that and drywall. Every time I get overcome with the 330 acres, it's washing into our six-foot-deep running toilet. I mean, I just can't. No one can afford to keep doing that without insurance.
Let's do that, let's get this on the Drainage Board, so the whole board can hear it.
Okay. When's that meeting? 21st.
Two weeks from today.
21st?
Yeah.
Is that here too? Same room?
Yes.
Okay, 5:00. 5:00, okay. Thank you, thanks for your time.
Give you back your visual.
Okay, yeah, thanks, I'll bring it next week.
Okay, great.
All right, thanks, appreciate you.
Hello, my name is Shelley Layman. I also live in Cotswold Hills on North Hampton Drive. I am representing the neighborhood as their HOA president. Josh has mentioned this several times about the drainage issue. This has been going on for the last couple of years. I personally have physically lived in this addition for four, almost five years. My parents, however, have lived in this addition for over 30 years. They were one of the first builders out in this addition. This issue never was a problem, until this 24-inch drain was put in, in 2024. This has never been an issue, and we've had multiple inches of rain come through, and never had flooding like we've ever seen, like in the last two years. There's never been any issues before with drainage, like Josh has mentioned. He actually had put in a water softener to get water into his sump pump, just to get it to run once in a while. My issue is, not only do we have Josh's problem, but other neighbors are also having issues that aren't even connected to this drain, or not even close to it, on the opposite side of the addition, where roads are completely flooded that you cannot even drive through. So people were stranded in their homes, because there's only one entrance in and out of this addition. We have medically fragile individuals that live in this addition, who are, some are on life support at this point, some are very fragile, where they'd need emergency rescue, and we couldn't get them help at this last flood that we had in May. However, this six-foot drainage ditch that we have, and we know for sure it is six feet, we've measured it, that area around this drainage ditch is so eroded that it is unsafe to mow around. After we had this flood in May, the large pipes exiting on the north side of this pond have completely collapsed. Mr. Lake has been aware of this for over two years. We've had no resolution. At this point, those drains are so covered over with debris, it is not safe for us to inspect them, because we can physically see from a distance that the ground is gone. The pipes are broken, there are giant sinkholes now around this pond. Not only do we have issues with people mowing it for us, and keeping the pond, quote-unquote pond, clear of algae and, and other debris, it's unsafe for them. We've asked for help multiple times from Mr. Lake, and not received any help, other than, "We don't have any money, can't do anything for you, sorry, we'll, we'll monitor." The ground is going away. We can't keep kids out of the pond, because they want to go down there and play, so it's a constant fear of a child thawing into that pond, and getting sucked in with all the silt and crap that's in the bottom of it. This needs to be addressed, and yes, I will be at the meeting in two weeks, but you all need to be aware of this too. We have some major issues. On the other side of Dixon Road, where this new pipe was put in, all of that area that was put in last year is gone. The drain that is the outlet going down that embankment on the other side of Josh's property, the water was so strong, it moved that iron grate over the pipe about 10 feet. Plus, all the riprap rock was strewn all the way down that side of the property, all the way down to the curve, which is probably, what, 30, 40 feet, at least? It wiped out enormous amounts of land and property and dirt from that area, from my property, from Josh's property, and other neighbors in the, in the neighborhood. If you look across 26, from where that swell is, the water was over 26, because the pipe couldn't handle it under 26. If you look into the apartment complex next, across 26 where that goes through, you can see where the ground has been washed away from that as well, because they put in this 24-inch pipe that has no control over how much water is flowing through it. Next time we get a big heavy rain, I encourage you to come out and look at it. We've shot multiple videos and pictures of the water flowing through on just a two-inch rain, let alone the seven-and-a-half or eight-inch rain that we got. It looks like Niagara Falls, and I, I will show you those videos if you'd like to see them. But I'm telling you, this is a major issue that we're dealing with now, since this pipe was put in, and we need something addressed. We need, we need help. And all the debris that's in there, I was assured the day after the flood, that Greg Lake would have his crew out there cleaning up all this debris and checking those pipes, and it has yet to be looked at. The only thing that was done was they removed the man, moved the manhole cover back, because that was a security issue or safety issue, because it would be big enough for even myself to drop down into that pipe, and I could have drowned, let alone a child. So it definitely needs addressed. Thank you.
How you doing? Dave Krebs, 11961 East, 100 South. I just got a couple of quick ones. You guys talked about the bonds at the beginning for the planning and stuff, equaling eight million, is that correct? Three million and five million?
Five on the road and three on the drainage.
So, I brought it up the last time, 550,000 solar panels at $20 apiece, if it gets damaged out there, that's 11 million. That bond ain't even going to cover it if we have a major. We had hail come through there a little over a year ago, damaged $80,000 on my property.
Okay, this is road use and drainage.
Right.
Are you talking decommissioning?
Yes, I was talking decommissioning at that time, yeah, yeah. But I just wanted to bring that up. Also, I brought- Also, I brought it up about the flooding out there, what's going to happen in my property. Did they actually put in for a flood permit, according to your ordinance? Because that is in your ordinance as well. And that has never been brought up about the flood permit, because I'm in the floodplain right there. So south of me, there's a big swath that comes down through there, on Rogers Creek or Rogers Ditch. So I'd like to see that flood permit myself. There's another one, so, that's all I got.
Any other public comments?
Brad Bagwell, Kokomo. I appreciate what Greg said earlier about the, the ordinance, that there's no way to get this done in a certain amount of time, however, the ordinance is the ordinance. As we've always been told, if you don't like the law, get the law changed. If the law, if the ordinance doesn't fit the circumstances, then the ordinance needs to change. That's all, you know, I think I was, I'm not sure when that ordinance was passed, but I think I was commissioner at the time, that the, those drainage ordinance and those ordinances were passed, that, you know, didn't anticipate these kinds of situations with, with the solar farm. Large subdivisions were put in when I was commissioner, and they didn't have the problem with getting the building permits or the permits that were required, they followed the ordinance. By saying, well, the ordinance, we can't follow the ordinance, because this is a special, special situation, it's not an excuse. If I were, if I were a developer and said, well, I can't follow the ordinance, because it doesn't fit my, my circumstance, I wouldn't get any ordinances, I wouldn't get any permits, I wouldn't get any special exceptions, I wouldn't get what I need to get done, I would have to follow the ordinance. It works both ways. That the ordinance is there, it needs to be followed, if you're not following, whoever's not following it, they shouldn't be allowed to continue. So I'm not, I'm, I'm not saying the solar farm is bad, I'm just saying that if the ordinance is there, either follow the ordinance, or change the ordinance. But if the ordinance hasn't been changed, it needs to be followed. Period. Thanks.
Okay, I'm not seeing anybody else, so. Next is adjournment, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And the motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
We extend and adjourn.